Good afternoon. I'd like to call the meeting, special meeting of September 8th, to order. If we could stand for a pledge allegiance to the flag, please.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation of the God, indivisible, with ever been justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Baldini?
Here.
Commissioner Combenzi?
Here.
Commissioner Conley? Commissioner Frazier?
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds? Mayor Protem Campana?
Here.
Mayor Cohen?
Here. A motion to approve the absence of Commissioner Reynolds and Commissioner Conley, who are both out of town, would be appropriate. Commissioner Frazier?
Make a motion to dismiss those to approve the -- pardon me, sorry. Make a motion to excuse them.
Commissioner Campana?
Support.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no, that motion passes unanimously. There are no announcement, uh, excuse me, approval of the agenda. This is a special meeting, so there can be no additions to, or no additions to the agenda. So is there a motion? Commissioner Baldini?
Prove the agenda.
Okay. Is there support? Commissioner Campana?
Support this.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, that motion passes. Now is the time for a public comment. Individuals wishing to speak on an agenda item, or just speak on any topic, please come forward. You have three minutes. The green light will go on when you start speaking. The yellow light will go on when you have one minute, and it'll start blinking when you have 30 seconds, and it'll go red when you have no time left. Please state your name, township, or city of ordinance, and address. Open for comments.
Frank Chefero, 350 East Ridge, Marquette. And as usual, or as often is the case, we don't have substantial information to comment on an agenda item. It was one step from devastating news to me to hear that Bill was resigning. After, you know, the hype he gave us when he first came on board, that he was back in his hometown, and happy to be here, it almost sounded like he was gonna, you know, serve until retirement. We certainly would like to find a reason, without delving too deeply into his personal business. It's also understood that he gave up his seeking of the position down in Traverse City, which leads me to fear that it might be a health issue. And it really hurts to think that we really had a super personable manager who's suddenly going to be leaving us, and all I can hope is that his, his health is fine, that he stays in town.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Bob Combenzi, 306 North Sixth Street, City of Marquette. First, and I know it's not part of the agenda for this meeting, maybe just kind of a public service announcement to anybody out there watching on TV. Six days from tonight, there's a public hearing on the budget. Pretty important. And please take a look at, at the proposed increase in the fees. You might be surprised if you haven't looked at that yet, and come to the meeting, and tell this commission what you think on that. And I would also like to reserve time for number four.
Anyone else wishing to come forward? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, if no one wishes to speak. Okay? Public comment section. New business? We have, I'm sorry, I put my microphone over, a consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, which basically are the minutes of the August 31st meeting? Commissioner Campana?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Frazier?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say yes.
Yes.
James? Opposed, came along, the consent agenda is approved. Now, new business. The first item before us is considering, accepting the city manager resignation. Last Friday, at eight o'clock, Mr. Vida presented three commissioners who were having a normal meeting with him on Friday morning, that he wanted to resign as of that date, but continued working, or gave us 30-day notice, which would mean that he would stop working October 5th. And there is, it's appropriate to make a motion regarding accepting or not accepting that. No motions? Okay, Commissioner Campana?
I make the motion that we accept the resignation of the current city manager, William Vida, effective the 5th of September, which will carry to October 5th.
Correct.
19, excuse me, 2015.
Is there support to that? Commissioner Frazier?
Support.
Okay, discussion. Commissioner Campana?
I hate to see him go. Regrettably, he is gonna be leaving us. This is a person who I have a lot of admiration for. I watched him years before, as, before I was on the commission, I watched him for two years being here on the commission. He's a very strong economic incentive for the city. He's the gentleman who gave us Founders Landing, Liberty Way, Smart Zone, Next Michigan Group, the hospital relocation. He got us through the winter freeze-ups. He didn't do it all by himself, but he led the way. He's a man with great vision. He would, you know, he was, he did very well for the city of Marquette, and the people should realize this. I feel, I think that he probably feels, you know, he's done as much as he can, and it's time to move on. And I think he's leaving on a high note, and I admire him for what he's done. And sorry to see him go. Thank you, Your Honor.
Commissioner Frazier?
Short time around the commission, and I think Bill's done a good job. He's done a lot, like Dave Campana said, as far as getting anything done in Marquette. And every event I've ever been to with Bill, he pushes Marquette, pushes Marquette, and does as much as he can to try and keep businesses in Marquette, even if they're leaving. I, too, am sad to see him go. It's his own personal reasons for leaving, that's up to him. Wish he could've stayed longer, but, you know, the person's gotta do it. They feel as best for them and their families, so I, too, sad to see him go, but wish him luck on his next adventure, and hope we can find somebody else that will do as good a job as him, and, you know, keep the city going.
Thank you. Other commissioners? Commissioner Combenzi?
Well, I'd like to thank Bill for his years of service to the city, too. It's not an easy job, no matter where you are. A lot of times, you have to make tough decisions, and a lot of times, you have to be the one to blame for a lot of those decisions and how they go. With that said, I do look forward to our city staff to kind of fill in the big role to be filled. I think they will do a great job, and I appreciate their effort to step up and lead the way in their departments, and certainly help us move forward. Thank you.
Commissioner Baldini, any comments?
Thank you, Your Honor. Like the others, I think it goes without saying that Marquette is in a position in the state of Michigan because of the hard work of the city manager, Mr. Vida, and also of the commissions that have taken some very tough stands on some issues. Bill has brought us to this point, helped bring us to this point, and we appreciate it, and I think the community should thank him for that, and we have, and we will. And it's, it's important for us, I think one of the things he has done is, let me posit or say that, I believe the staff has, is very aware of what all the challenges, the exciting challenges, really, I keep saying exciting challenges, 'cause they are, between now and the end of the year, and then next year and the year after that we have, they're gonna get done. And, and I have confidence in the staff, and I, I think part of that is that Bill has prepared the staff to do that. And I want to say thank you to him. It was his decision to resign, and thank him for his efforts bringing the city where it is today. So thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome. I would just echo those comments that my fellow commissioners made. He is a tremendously talented person. He has shared with me why he was leaving. He felt that he had accomplished what he wanted to do. I wanted to serve again on the commission, with the commission that I thought was an excellent commission, doing great work, and an excellent city manager. I've had the opportunity to work with eight city managers, and this man is at the top in terms of skill. I spent some time with him this morning, and ended my conversation with him with a hug. He, I think, is very saddened by leaving. I'm saddened by leaving, by his leaving. I think, in addition to feeling that he accomplished everything, he came from mostly the federal government experience, and he's never had an experience in local government. And local government, as we all know, can be difficult. Every year, you have two to three different bosses coming on the scene, and that's very difficult at times. And as we've all experienced, some of the public comments are often very difficult to hear, and that makes it, you kind of wonder, why am I doing this, listening to some of the public comments that are pretty abrasive at times? But that's people's right. But it's, it's hurtful. And I think, I think he will move on in a successful career, whatever he does. I, he has no idea what he's gonna do right now. I think perhaps a federal, another discussion as part of this moment, motion, accepting his resignation. We really have two choices: to keep him on, working until October 5th, and really, it's probably October 3rd, 'cause it's the weekend. We have two choices: to keep him on as city manager, or to say thank you. We need, because of all the tremendous issues that we have confronting us, which need immediate attention, to have a city manager with ultimate authority that's, right now, we, we need somebody like, that has the authority, that's gonna be here for a while. And as we see, we have, the bottom agenda item is considering a joint, or city, interim city manager. But it's, you know, for a month, we then have a city manager who's leaving, and then an interim city manager who's there. So I think an amendment would be reasonable to entertain, to either change, or to keep him on till the 5th of October, or to say, we will terminate Bill right now, today, and then have a city manager appointed tonight to be the city manager, with, as it says in the, in the charter, that that acting city manager will have the ultimate total authority. So is there such a motion by anybody that would like to do that? Commissioner Baldini?
Do the makers of the motion want to accept that as a friendly amendment, or? Sir, you, do I have?
Yeah, well, there is no, there is, okay, yes, go ahead.
So the friendly amendment's gonna be that we are gonna go with a permanent position as of?
No, no. The friendly amendment, and there is no friendly, no one has made an amendment, okay? So the question really isn't clear. I'm asked for an amendment to that. So Commissioner Baldini, would you make a motion to, so the motion, the original person who made the motion could understand what exactly the friendly?
I would move that we amend the main motion, that we would accept the city manager's resignation, and that he would be terminated, but not serving, he'd be terminated on October 5th. Is that the correct date? But that he not be required, or he'd not come into the office, and that he serve his 30 days, or his, he'd be terminated, he'd be compensated for those 30 days as the contract provides.
To further clarify that, what I interpret that to mean is, he tonight, right, if this motion passes with that amendment, he would be terminated, and?
Unterminated.
Not, he, not terminated.
I don't want you to term him terminated.
He would not serve anymore as, as city manager. We'd have to appoint a acting city manager. That way, we have clear continuity, and someone in charge who isn't gonna say, oh, I'm not gonna be here in 25 days or so. That's what the amendment means. He would then continue to, and the other assumed would be, again, this is more complicated, that you'd either pay him for, until October 30, October 5th. And he would also be able to accrue payment for the vacation and other things that he has accumulated in that time. He would not lose that. Okay? Is that acceptable? I, I had a conversation with the city attorney about this, as to both ways to go on, that's why I'm?
I'm not suggesting.
Okay?
And I, I just wanted to clarify, I mean, he's resigned, we're not terminating him in any way. What you're really getting at is, are we going to accept his resignation effective now, but pay him through his 30-day period? Or are we going to have him work for the 30 days, and accept his resignation effective the end of the 30 days? I think is really what you're getting at.
I am moving to amend that we accept his resignation now, and that we pay him for the, as the contract, his contract stipulates.
Commissioner Campana?
And he will not be in the office for 30 days.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Unless?
We're accepting his, if this passes, his resignation is effective tonight. Is that acceptable?
It's acceptable to me.
It's acceptable to me, too, as long as the, you know, interim city manager thinks he can get caught up to speed on everything that's going on, you know, that's the only thing I would worry about is, I guess the 30 days would give the two of them the work time together. I don't know how it would work, but?
Well, in fairness, I spoke with the city manager tonight, this morning, and said this might be an option that would, the city commission would pursue, and he said he was okay with that. And I talked to Mr. Angeli, who we are thinking of appointing as city manager, and he was comfortable with that. And Mr. Vida said that he would be available to the acting city manager if he was called on for help.
I have no problem with that, as long as the two of them can work together a little bit, in case the interim city manager has any questions, to try and get them through this, this, you know, grace period here, then I have no problem with amendment.
Okay, all right. Any further discussion? Suzanne, is that clear? I mean, thank you for the correction about termination versus accepting his resignation, 'cause he, we are not terminating him, he is resigning.
Correct.
Okay.
The, the only other, I guess, item that I would suggest that you clarify, if this motion passes, where you're accepting his resignation today, he will be available on call, or whatever you wanna call it, through October 3rd to assist in the transition, but he will be paid and receive benefits per his contract through that October 3rd date. The only other suggestion, I guess, that I would make is that you clarify, for example, as to whether or not he would retain the city cellphone in the meantime, or anything like that, just so that HR knows if they need to be doing anything before October 3rd.
Well, could I ask you this? Is there a policy, whether it's the city manager or a department head, that once they resign, what happens on that date to all of the access and things that they have?
My understanding, per my conversation with Susan Bohr earlier today, is that for any city employee, when they are either terminated or their resignation becomes effective, that basically, they no longer have cer, or have access to the network, or email, and generally, they would meet with the HR person to turn in their equipment, name badges, and those types of things, generally, on their last day of employment. So that is what would generally occur, for, for any employee. And then typically, their emails would be transferred, or forwarded to their department head, or the person who basically would be responsible for handling those things in the interim.
Is there any reason why the city manager should be treated any differently than any employee, or change that policy?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Further discussion? Commissioner Campana?
So for the next 30 days, he'll have a cellphone, a computer?
No.
No.
No. But his last day is, you know, 5th of October?
No, no, we are accepting his resignation as of tonight.
Okay, so, but, so he doesn't go to the end of his employment, which would be the 5th? Is that what you said?
If his, if, if this motion passes and his resignation is accepted as of tonight, then technically, his employment, as far as providing services, would end today, or tonight. But my understanding is, the motion is that he would then continue to be paid through that 30-day period for the notice that he provided.
Any further questions? None. All those in motion, all those in favor of the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, opposed, no, that passes unanimously. The next item is appointment of the interim city manager. Is there a motion regarding appointing a interim city manager? Commissioner Baldini?
I would move that we appoint Mike Angeli, who's the current chief of our police department, to be the acting city manager.
Is there support to that? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Commissioner Baldini?
I, this is the second time Mike Angeli's been called upon to fill this role, and I think we're quite fortunate that he's here to do this for us. And he served with great distinction the last time. He got many accolades, and matter of fact, when people heard that the certain, the current city manager, or the previous city manager, was resigning, a couple people said, oh, I suppose Mike will step back in again. And, I mean, there was that assumption. And I, I think he has credibility with the staff, he also has credibility with the community, and I know the commission has always liked his work, and he's attending, he attends all the meetings, so it's not as if he's unfamiliar, he's not familiar with the, the issues here. I, I think we're fortunate and lucky to have him here to, to be willing to step into this position again, so. I move we support him.
Commissioner Frazier?
I do, and thank, well, we have Mike Angeli to cover us for this interim period, and I thank him for doing this work. He's got a lot of stuff on his plate, but I hope this doesn't affect him. I think he'll do a good job in this, and him and Bill have always worked good together, so I think this'll be a smooth transition for him, and I think if he was to reach out to Bill for anything, I think him and Bill would, you know, gladly help him out, so I think that's another benefit to have Mike as our interim manager, so I'm all for this.
Commissioner Combenzi?
Well, I also support this appointment. I guess one question I have is, then what happens, you know, one, how long do we, I guess, keep an interim? And what happens to his department? Do we have to worry about any?
Well, according to the charter, we have, the commission in 90 days has to appoint a, select a city manager. So this, in theory, would be 90-day, you know, but if we don't have a city manager in 90 days selected, then we'd hopefully reappoint the acting city manager. And I have had, I mean, I think it's reasonable, when Bill submitted his resignation, I think Bill had talked to Mr. Angeli on two occasions, and Mr. Angeli said, yes, I would be willing to serve. So, I mean, it's not like this is a big surprise to him, like, what, I'm going to be assistant city manager? You know, I don't wanna be that. He said, yes, I would be willing to step up and serve, so I think that, and, and he would then have a plan, as he did the previous time, with his department. Okay? Is that reasonable? Okay? Any further questions? Commissioner Combenzi? Commissioner Campana?
I would support Chief Angeli, because, the simple reason, that he's got the most experience for the city manager's job of anybody in this room, in the city. He's worked with the commission before, in the absence of Bill Vida, and besides the experience, he's willing to do it, and, you know, there, we have a lot of things going on in the city, and he would be the person that knows, that can get us through this, I believe. So I'd be all in favor of this. Thank you.
Okay, I certainly would echo those comments. I think, I have full faith that he could do this job. Seeing no other comments, I'll call the motion to appoint Chief Angeli as interim city manager. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Okay. I, I think in doing so, it thus follows that the mayor and the mayor pro tem would sit down with him and work out an agreement for recompense of this task, and then bring it back to, hopefully, at the next Monday's meeting, if we could arrange that. Okay, to do that, without a motion? I mean, okay. Now, I've asked Madam Clerk to swear in Acting City Manager Angeli. Chief Angeli, or as Acting City Manager, and Acting City Manager, Angeli, thank you very much for being willing to step up and serve the community. Appreciate it.
You go to one major concern, or I can't, you know, the clock?
Well, you know, you're, you're stuck, you just took the oath, so suck it up, okay? But I have to say, it is nice to have a city manager who carries a gun and a stun gun, so, so keep that in mind, audience, okay? And commissioners, and employees of the city. Next item is discussion considering selecting a firm to conduct a city manager search, and consider appointing a commission subcommittee to review the process. Mr. Combenzi, you wish to speak on this item?
Bob Combenzi, 306 North Sixth Street, City of Marquette. It's my feeling that the city commission doesn't have to be in any big rush to consider hiring a firm at this point. I think that, basically, with the department heads, with Mr. Angeli as the acting city manager, and certainly, I applaud Dennis Stackowitz for all the work that he's done through this process for the last couple of years, with Mr. Vida. I think right now, the city's in good hands. I think internally, I think there's, there's very capable people right here. And I guess my feeling would be, I think you gotta give it a little chance, and I think it's gonna work just fine for some period of time. You know, I, I'm not ever convinced that we need to go out on a national search for school superintendents, for city managers, for whatever. I think when you have people right here in town that, that are well-qualified, and have a real vested interest in the city, I think we should give them a chance. vested interest in the city, I think we should give them a chance. You may want to consider talking to two former commissioners, Tolleson and Levy, who were sort of in this position about 11 years ago. I guess I can't recall 100% what the commission did at that time, but Judy Akala ended up assuming the position of city manager for a period of three to four years. She was on staff of the city prior to that and did a good job. So please consider that.
Commission, what is your thoughts? What are your thoughts here? I would entertain a motion to dispense with the rules regarding a motion and have a discussion. Is there such a motion? Commissioner Kampenzi.
I move we suspend rules.
Commissioner Campana?
I support that.
Okay. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Okay. So what are your thoughts? Why don't we just go down the line? Commissioner Kampenzi.
Well, I guess I kind of agree. I think with everything we have going on right now, I think we have a pretty critical timeline with the hospital. I think we do have capable people internally, and I guess right now I'm not in favor of going out and selecting a firm to actually look for a new city manager. I think for right now, I'm comfortable just appointing someone internally and, I guess, coming to this point somewhere down the road.
Okay. Mr. Frazier.
I agree. I think we're in good hands right now with Mike Angeli, but I think at some time we have to do a search or find some way to do a search for a new manager to eventually take over and get caught up to speed, because if we do get a new city manager, eventually he's going to have to get brought up to speed on everything. So I think it doesn't hurt to, you know, look around a little bit. I don't know if we necessarily have to get a firm to do this, but I agree we're in good hands for now, but I think that we need to definitely look at it before, you know, at least at the end of the year or something like that, trying to find somebody. It takes some time, because it's going to take a while to get somebody on board and then get them up to speed. So, you know, I don't know if we need a firm to do this, but I agree we need to get something done.
Commissioner Campana?
Chief Angeli, I believe, was born and raised in the city. He knows the city, what's, you know, how it's developed over the last many, many years. I think it's important, when you have somebody running the city, somebody who can keep that continuity going. He's been through everything, every problem that we've had for the last great number of years. I would find it difficult, or, you know, have somebody else come in and take over, and like Commissioner Frazier says, try to get them up to speed would be a little difficult. I mean, there's so much background going on here, and we have so many things going on. It's not just a simple walk-on job. So I would, you know, all in favor of keeping him here, and I probably would be in favor of him being here for a very long time. I think that, again, he has the experience and the know-how to do a very good job for the city. So thank you.
We'll just go down the line, Tom, if you don't mind. I just want to read a list of things that we have on our agenda going on right now. And keep in mind, if it takes three months or six months to get a new city manager, and those of us who have been city commissioners recognize that it probably takes six months to figure out what in the heck is going on. I mean, that was my experience, like, wow, it took that long. So you can imagine, we're looking at a year for a new city manager to come in and deal with these problems, the hospital construction and all the brownfield complications, the moving of the municipal service center, the Board of Light and Power project that they're looking at building, and all the problems with bonding that that creates, the Clark Park thing, deal, the Marquette LDFA and the Smart Zone, the Superior Trade Zone with Marquette and Delta County, the connections with the state government, which are very, very strong right now. If we hire from someone from Nebraska, they probably don't even know where Lansing is. So those are important issues. The issues of the landfill and recycling, that's right now a mess. The budget and the complications with the dark stores and the, you know, $2 million a year that we seem to be short every year, and all the Michigan Tax Tribunal issues. Can you imagine how difficult that is? And I have a real problem, and I would comment, I was on the commission with Commissioners Tolleson and Levy when Judy Akala was hired. And it was, we did not nationally advertise, and it was awful. We just got terrible candidates. And fortunately, Judy, who knew the city, stepped forward and said, "I'd be willing to be considered." And she did, I think, a very admirable job in difficult times. But it took a long time, and just because we hire out a consultant doesn't mean we're going to get another Bill Vida, quality-wise. It's very, he's a very unique person. So I also think that it would be reasonable to look at, in the near future, in the next month or so, to consider going ahead and offering Chief Angeli a permanent position, but it would be a contractual position, could be for a year, and he would be the city manager. He could quit in 30 days, just like Mr. Vida did. Or we could get rid of him if he was doing a terrible job, and we could do that. I don't think that'll happen, but I think that's something that we should consider. I think we need, I don't think we can just say, "Well, let's do nothing," because the charter says you've got to have somebody in 90 days, which is probably impossible in this day and age. But I think we should really consider that, either hire him as a permanent city manager or hire a headhunter firm to do this. My experience in the past has not been very positive with going with the MML, One-Ad List, or, you know, the three surrounding states. That was non-productive in terms of quality people. So I think that's my thought. Commissioner Baldini?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to make a motion. I think it's appropriate, and if there's a second, then I'd like to speak to it. I'd like to move that we authorize, excuse me, I'd like to move that we authorize the mayor and the mayor pro tem to enter into a discussion with the acting city manager, Mike Angeli, with the intention of appointing him to be the permanent city manager, and discuss terms of the agreement to be voted on by the commission at our September 14th meeting.
Okay, is there support to that? Commissioner Campana? Okay, further discussion?
Well, I think, I think my colleagues have pretty much laid the case out why it's important to move on this type of a motion. I think that the city manager, our city manager, the new one being Mr. Angeli, it's important that everybody understand he is the city manager, he's not the acting city manager. You read a list of topics, Your Honor, or issues that we are going to have to deal with, and they are going to come, and many of them have a date certain to them, like December 31st, and that's not that far off, and we're going to have to deal with them. And if we miss some of those dates, we will have to wait till next year. I think the staff is very aware of what those projects are, and I think therefore it's incumbent on us, and if he's willing to accept the title of permanent city manager, I think it's very important, it's very important, I think, for him to fulfill his job, but also very important for us in the community and for him to have that title. And so I'm suggesting that you, Your Honor, and the mayor pro tem, enter into that discussion with him this week and have something for us to finalize at our Monday meeting of the 14th.
Commissioner Campana?
Due to the reason that we do have all these events that are coming fast, we do need somebody who is very familiar with them. Chief Angeli is aware of everything. He's been there since day one. He can step in and help alleviate these problems and then work towards a solution. He's just, at this point, he's the gentleman that we need to do this. So, yes, I'm all in favor of this.
Thank you. I would like to just add a couple of thoughts. If he, if this motion were to pass, I think he would have to resign as chief of police. He could not be both total city manager and chief of police, and that Mr. Angeli has to think about that. I would make one other comment. I've read this list of things, and can you imagine trying to negotiate, just put yourself in this position? I'm not, I'll be Acting City Manager Angeli, and I'm sitting down, trying to negotiate with Duke Life Point, and they, I'm sitting across the table from them, and they're looking at him and saying, "Hm, he's only going to be here for 90 days. I don't care about him. I'm going to wait." Well, guess what? We've got a whole lot to accomplish by December 31st, and, you know, like a four-day window or so after December 31st. So Duke Life Point's sitting there, this guy's only there for 90 days. Same with the Board of Light and Power. They've got some real strong issues they've got to deal with, and if they don't have to deal with somebody who they don't know who's going to be there. Same with the Smart Zone, the Trade Zone, the landfill issues, those are all issues which you have to have somebody there who they know is going to have authority. And I don't think we can wait a year or six months even to have that individual sitting at the table representing us. So Commissioner, any other commissioners wish to speak? Commissioner Kampenzi?
Just one comment. I support Mike, and I don't doubt that he can't do a good job, but I, without being too formal, we're five of seven tonight, and I guess I'm fine with the negotiation and talking to Mike, but I would like, it sounds like it's final with the five of us tonight. I'd like seven of us to vote on it. I believe seven of us would be here next week. It just feels like that might be the right thing to do, to have all of us. And I think waiting a week isn't going to be too long, but I just, I guess, knowing that this meeting came up Friday afternoon, you know, some of the other commissioners couldn't plan to be here, and I guess, just for the simple fact that we're a body of seven, I guess, I'd like to ask that to be considered.
Commissioner Frazier?
I support everything Mike Angeli does, and I think it'd be good for us. I agree with Sarah that, you know, it would be fair to the commissioners to wait till they wait a week or something like that, and I think it'd give Mike time to think it over and see what his feelings are on everything he's got going on, if he's willing to take on the challenge, you know? And I think if the seven of us agree to do it, he could be our quarterback or just the general manager. You know, he's kind of like the quarterback of the team, so if he's willing to take the heat and go for it, then, you know, I think if the seven of us agree, we should do it.
Okay, thank you. Can I ask Suzanne a question? I always get this screwed up about tabling things, okay? So, because whatever I say is usually wrong. I think the two commissioners who just said about having all seven of us here raises a good point. What's the proper procedure to take this motion and just delay it, or what do you do?
What I would probably do is have the maker of the motion withdraw it.
I don't want to do that. I want to have it on there so we can bring it up at the next meeting.
Technically...
Can I? I'm the maker of the motion.
Well, wait, let me, let her finish.
Technically, I don't know that you can simply table it to the next meeting. You could take no action on it at this time and leave it as old business at the next meeting?
Okay, well, let's go to Commissioner Baldini, who is anxious to speak.
Well, my point is, the motion is we're authorizing the two of you to discuss this, come back to us next week, Monday, when I'm assuming the other two commissioners are going to be back here. I mean, we are not, I said that I'm moving that we authorize the mayor and mayor pro tem to enter into discussions with the acting city manager, Michael Angeli, with the intention of appointing him to be the permanent city manager, and to work out the details of the contract to be voted on and to be brought back and voted on. So if we next Monday don't like the fact that, you know, he's getting X, Y, or Z, or whatever it is, we're going to vote on that next week. So what this does is it authorizes the two of them to enter into discussion with the acting city manager, to come back to us next Monday with the idea to be the permanent city manager. I think he wants to be or should be, and also what are the details of that contract? And at that point, I am advised that Commissioner Conley will be back, will be here, and I think Sarah Reynolds will also be here. So I don't see this motion that I'm making as a fait accompli. I see it as a procedural step.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. With that, any further discussion? Okay. Call question then? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. That concludes our agenda. Comments from the commission? Commissioner Baldini?
Thank you, Your Honor. It's an interesting time that we're here, accepting the resignation of the city manager and appointing a new acting city manager, and in light of what the community was like this weekend. I mean, it was just a very, very busy, busy weekend. I mean, we had a, we had a race, we had a great event in the park, we just had a lot of people here celebrating the holiday. Nature did cooperate and gave us very beautiful weather. And in some ways, I was walking around this weekend thinking about how people were out, enjoying themselves, walking around the streets, enjoying themselves down at the festival, the people who were running in the race, knowing full well that we were going to have to come here on Tuesday and deal with the acceptance of a resignation and appoint somebody to be our acting city manager. But we did, we're going to do that, and we're going to move on. But I think also it should be noted that, you know, we are moving forward, and we're going to continue to move forward. I think we have the staff, and we have, we have the personnel here, and we have a good plan in place to do that. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Campana?
Well, I think it's, you know, I'm sorry to see that we're going to be losing a very qualified city manager, but we do have to move on. We have, it's a difficult time coming up for the city, the commission, the staff, and I think we're fortunate to have Chief Angeli, who is, to me, highly qualified and, again, willing to do this, and he can step in, and he's going to guide us through this. Again, we're fortunate, and I look forward to a long relationship with him. Thank you, Your Honor.
Commissioner Frazier?
I too enjoyed the nice weekend. There's a lot of stuff going on in town, and sad to see Bill go. You know, that's one of the things Bill did do. I went to a couple of events with Bill, and whenever there was a new event in town that never been there before, the first thing he asked them was, "How can we get you back? How can we get you back next year? How can we make this agreement for a long term?" And I think that's one thing he was really good at. And, you know, there was just the Blues Fest, the weather was great for them, there was some weddings in town, there was the, all the racing. It was just, it was a crazy weekend, but I think everybody enjoyed last weekend of summer, and I think we'll move on with Chief Angeli, and I think your points, he does carry a dazer so well to watch ourselves from now on, so be careful of that. So, other than that, I wish Mike Angeli luck on his next adventure here.
Commissioner Kampenzi?
Well, I too would like to thank Mike Angeli for stepping up, and also to thank the mayor for reading the list, the long list of some big projects we're facing. And I guess the last comment I want to make is when, even though there's five of us here tonight, all of us have the same feeling that right now it's best to stay internal and kind of get our feet under ourselves. That feels good leaving the meeting, so I think we're on the right path, and I look forward to what we can accomplish coming up.
Thank you. I want to thank Commissioners Kampenzi and Frazier for a good point. I want to thank Commissioners Kimbensee and Frazier for a good point to have all of us here. I think that was a very good point. I'm happy and sad. I'm happy to have Mike Angeli be willing to do this. It's a great responsibility and thank you for doing it. And I'm sad that Bill is leaving and I wish him the very best in the future. He's done a great job here and I think the community understands that. So thank you all. And now Acting City Manager Angeli, do you have any comments?
If I may, just try to be brief here. I just wanted you to know that I went to bed last Thursday night just being a plain old chief of police, looking forward to a three-day weekend and a lot transpired in that time. But I do appreciate your support and your confidence and I hope to live up to that. I wish you would have read me the list before. No. I knew, I full well knew the list. But just to echo everybody's comments about Bill Vida, I mean, he, he really put us on the map in a lot of different ways. And much like you, Mr. Mayor, I've been around for a while and been through several city managers and he ranks right up there. There's no failure on his part. He's not, I don't believe letting anybody down. I think, like you mentioned, he reached a point where he thought it'd be better or more effective if he stepped down and just moved on with his life. And I was sorry to see him go as much as anybody else that wanted him to stay. And I hope that no one in the public would think otherwise of him. You know, we all, I think, at some point tried to convince him otherwise or to get him to change his mind and it just didn't work. He'd come to this conclusion on his own. But the last comment is I would not have considered doing this if I didn't think that the staff that's currently in place is excellent or above. I mean, there's tremendous support here amongst the staff for getting the things done that you want to get done. And when I make the comment that it'll get done, I'm confident when I say that. That doesn't necessarily mean I'm going to do it. It just means that there are people here who are very qualified, very good at what they do, care very much for the city, and I think they're here to do that. And I'm very proud of working with them and I'm happy that they're here with me. So, thank you.
Thank you. And thank you all for coming tonight. Meeting adjourned.